Oh, we are.
Okay, you weren't gonna go, you don't wanna go live? Okay.
So, uh.
Yeah.
Not the meeting. Oh, we are.
So.
Okay, you weren't gonna go, you don't wanna go live? Okay. Okay. That's what you, okay, that's easier.
Alright, seven o'clock, call me in order.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chip had to step out for a few minutes, so we're gonna fumble through it, Angie and I, so. Since on there with me. I'm number three, present, Barsness, Udisburg, Hopeberg is missing. T. Reichman, Savajo, A. Reichman, and Legred. Make a motion to approve the agenda. So move, thank you, Savajo, second.
Will start.
Thank you, Nick. Barsness, yes, Savajo.
Yes.
T. Reichman.
Yes.
Udisburg.
Yes.
A. Reichman.
Yes.
Legred.
Yes.
And Kerry's. Visitor comments? Any visitor comments? Will stand up and go.
Yep.
Go ahead.
Mark Mo. I reside at two, six, seven, seven, five, Mickelson Drive, Starbucks in Nostoro. I graduated high school here in nineteen ninety-five. Ten years ago, I met Katie, she had three girls, one of them was going to seventh grade in Alexandria. We dated for a year and moved down here, so I could put them through the school that I went to school at. What's went on here? In the last, almost two years, has got me pretty disappointed with last week. I've stayed quiet until last week, and my second grader gets sent home from school, being perfectly healthy. Today, I've gone to the doctor to get a COVID test, and they shoved them things up his nostrils so far that he cries. When is enough enough? I do business in Montana, they're laughing at us. We need to stand up. We don't know if tests are positive or negative, negative tests are positive. My neighbor's Dr. Holtie got vaccinated, did everything by the book, he's one of the most healthy guys I know. He's going to Rochester tomorrow to get a lung tr- to get evaluated for a lung transplant. Doesn't smoke, doesn't drink, his tests are negative. Are we gonna send our kids home and have them taught from, learn from home? Whose ideas are these? I guess, I sent an email out because the teacher made a mistake and left all her email addresses on there, so I reached out to the rest of the parents to see if everyone else approves of this. And I had several messages back thanking me to stand up. I didn't ask anybody to come to the meeting with me, I had conversations with parents. People are upset, people are scared to come here. I have things going on, I shouldn't be here in public, but I'm here because my kids, if I lose everything, I want my kids to have a future, I want my kids to be taught in a public school. And I'm gonna say some things that are gonna be hurtful. I run a business, a multimillion dollar business, and I'm not here to break. I'm not broke. I was told by my biggest customer ten years ago, when we made some mistakes, I said, I can't control what my employees do. He goes, you don't only need a hundred percent over your employees, Mark, you need a hundred and twenty percent control over your employees. Little did I come to find out that I lost that account, he's my biggest account. I was replaced. And I'm here to tell you, the school board is elected, you guys are in charge here. We don't need ten percent of the people, we're going in you guys. There's ninety percent of us out here, according to surveys done, not mentioning names, ninety percent want masks gone. They want our kids in school. And people are not gonna come here and stand up because they're scared they'll lose everything. I've started over once, I'm gonna start over again if I have to. It's time you guys run this school district like you run your businesses. And the superintendent, I don't know him personally, but if he doesn't want a superintendent, we replace him. Everybody's replaceable, from the superintendent to the principal to every teacher in this school district. I'm tired of it. I'm not out here to make friends. I'm not out here, I was told not to do it because my kids would have problems in school with teachers, well, I can move to where I run my business. And I run it out of Montana. And I got private contractors out there, employees out there, they can't believe that we're still doing this. When is enough enough? We voted the school board in, let the school board run the school, let our kids go to school. If my kid's test comes back positive because he's sick, it's wrong. My kids don't get sick. I went here, I missed less days of school K through twelve than my second grader has already missed in his time from K to two. I'm not saying I was the smartest son that ever walked through these doors or back in them. I want my kids to go to school here. And if we have teachers having problems with kids in school, if your kid is sick, send him home. I, I, I have no problem with that. But to send healthy kids home and let a kid come back to school because he's been quarantined or she's been quarantined for two weeks now and, and she's okay, so my kid is wondering at home on Zoom today, why is this kid in the classroom, Dad, and I can't be there? What do you tell him? What do you tell him? I mean, I, I honestly, I am fed up. I, I, I've kept quiet, I'm not no more. Principal called me, told me not to cause drama, not to start a big uproar. What is this, what, are we supposed to sit back and just let the ones that want masks and want distance learning? We didn't get our childhoods taken away. Every one of us in this room got to go to school. We didn't get to sit out, we didn't get sent home because of false positive test, false negative, whatever it is. Thank you for letting me talk. I'm gonna leave unless someone has questions for me, but that's where we're at. There's more than just Mark Mo that has a problem with what happened in that second grade class. And there's more school districts in Minnewaska, but this is where I want my kids to be. And I thank you guys for doing a job that I would never put myself on a ballot to do, because you guys put up with. Now you just found out why I can't.
Appreciate your comments, thank you.
Yeah.
Have a good night. Uh, special recognitions and honors.
Uh.
Oh.
Any other comments?
Any more?
Any other comments? Okay. Special recognitions and honors.
Uh, tonight, we have a number of special recognition and honors, although you can, board members have it on your agenda or even they can screen, uh, I think there's some flash painted ads that are not in your packets. But a, a big shout out to Laker Head Boys, uh, varsity soccer coach Ted Hill. Pretty big deal being selected coach of the year for an outstate public school. Uh, and so you can see Ted had one of his most successful years, Coach Hill's completed his twenty-sixth year coaching the Minnewaska Lakers soccer, congratulations to Ted Hill. And Minewaska Lakers cross country, I think we had a cross country my second year here. Four years later, they got a team downstate tournament, took, uh, what, the K? Yeah, I think K. And so, uh, great numbers, so just a huge shout out to our whole cross country team and our coaches, Linda Mills and Jennifer Johnsrue. And then, uh, Dave Mo, uh, every day just comes in. Uh, Dave Mo and Connie Hagan, they both just jumped into our long-term self positions. Uh, come here every day, super flexible, uh, you can see the amount of work they've done, I just wanna put a huge shout out there. And then I just wanna add, um, I'd also like to, you know, I think we recognized them a month ago, but, uh, two other individuals in Jeremy Armstrong and Ross Alveson. Uh, the absence of Corey Curry since the, uh, what, fifteenth of October. Uh, those two have stepped in the last three weeks, oh, more than that, almost a month. Uh, as our new building grounds come, come in, so building is, I don't know, we've got a lot of compliments. We're fully staffed, our building grounds guy will be here next week, but I wanna recognize them. And then in closing, uh, all of our, our entire staff, this is American Education Appreciation Week. And so just wanna thank them, we, later in the board agenda, I'll be back to recognition of the board, uh, partners with Mr. Venice and MTA, and, uh, you'll see it later in the agenda, but uh, as a, as a nice tribute to all of our entire staff during American Education Week.
Very good. Two more minutes for the following minutes, Monday, October eighteen, three, there's school board meeting. You can take a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Zach, in a second.
One second.
Angie, Barsness, yes, Savajo.
Yes.
T. Reichman.
Yes.
Udisburg.
Yes.
A. Reichman.
Yes.
Legred.
Yes.
And Kerry's. Consider approve claims, accounts, donations, and gifts.
Yes.
Some of the bills, uh, posted, shared out. Uh, there in there, Tim, but you can take a look. Uh, trying to make this a little bigger so we can see it. Uh, some of the bills beyond it. Uh, you can see, uh, that's our first semester tuition, uh, sixty-two thousand, seventy-one, that's out of your control. This is our college classes and our, uh, PSU, so that's about a high dollar number. This is our auditor for the ten thousand. Twelve sixty-one, that's your, uh, credit card bill, uh, that's all your school's purchases for books, supplies, and et cetera. You can see, just, nothing's out of ordinary here. In fact, I'm trying to find. We front loaded, uh, the construction project out there, we paid twenty-five percent up front, so you can see there, that's been taken out. That's what this, and then NEC Building Solutions. So for all the board and all the members here, sometime in the next five weeks, we'll be cutting over to NEC. So everything controlled in our district is around Johnson Controls, you entered an agreement with them, uh, some time ago. I don't know if it was, uh, Vicki didn't wanna be here because it was too emotional tonight for her, but, uh, I would say five to ten, it's probably ten-year agreement. It's coming to an end, the issue with Johnson Controls is they have proprietary rights. So anything in our HVAC system, nobody can outsourced Johnson Controls' controls, and it's pretty spending a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars a year. NEC, what they do is they're former Johnson Controls employees that developed a computer software and they put into your systems that allow you to, basically allows you to have, uh,
Control.
Control of your own stuff, so you can call Rabbit Response, you can call anybody you want, uh, to work on some of your HVAC. Now, that doesn't mean Johnson Controls isn't gonna be our billing, in fact, I'm meeting with them tomorrow morning because we still have some, um, some service companies out there, but you know, they're, it's not proprietary, so you can call on certain projects, because we'll need Johnson Controls on, I was told for summer children, because they're the only people who can handle this, but that's what that, that NEC, so that's a total cost, uh, for that changeover. Uh, Ruins, Sons, Sisters, Special Education, Spanish, Sisco, Spoon. Colonics. Colonics. Saw that earlier, hasn't it? Colonics. I have to go look. Do you have, uh, the only thing I was possibly thinking is we had a combi oven that we swapped over on break, and I'm guessing that's about that cost right there. So you had a combi oven that got swapped out here, that's why we didn't, we couldn't cater the last meals. Like in Coke, there's nothing, you'll see our revenues, we've got, I think we've got a piece. We're getting our monies in, monies out, not a big deal. So we're on the wrong pace, nothing that's really out of the ordinary.
Any questions for Chip? Or obtain a motion to approve?
So move.
Thank you, Nick, in a second.
Yeah.
T. Reichman, thank you. Barsness, yes, Savajo. T. Reichman.
Yes.
Udisburg.
Yes.
A. Reichman.
Yes.
Legred.
Yes.
Kerry's.
Custom reports up here on the screen, you can see our money making, our petty cash. You can just see the interest that we've gotten on our principles, you can see that over here. Uh, so there's your interest earnings. Four thousand four seventy-three nineteen. And food service support. I, I don't. One thing I would say, you would have saw something on paper, um, North Lakes Country Service Co-op. Luckily, we swapped and we did pair with, uh, Allen, because we use Cisco. Um, but Western Minnesota, their food vendor, uh, took a thirty-day opt-out. So there is a, there are people in our service co-op that are struggling to feed their students, because Cisco will not take anybody else on. We struggle because there's a, a lot of times, they, um, they have to stop, swap, so, and for anybody watching this or being in the future, for a lot of your all parents, uh, yeah, I read, this morning I read, because we had dipping dots or something. Maybe, uh, but sometimes there are some swaps, because there are substitutions, because things aren't available. But that doesn't, uh, hasn't affected us. The good news is your food service, uh, you can see here on the screen, it continues to grow. You, you made another sixty-four hundred, and, uh, most of it's off your All Card since, uh, All launches in breakfast at eight-four. And then the revenue expenditure report, uh, sent that to the board, you can see it, I think we're at twenty-nine percent on our revenues. And I think we're at like thirty, yeah. Nineteen percent on revenue, and I think we're at thirteen percent on expenditures, but I'll, uh, Yeah, twenty-nine percent on expenditures. Again, there's nothing else. We, some, one of the crazy things going on right now, like I accept another grant for eighty-four thousand dollars, but everybody's like, oh, we got eighty-four thousand dollars. There's this many pages you have to read, it's about reading, it's about, um, academic recovery time. So if students lost any kind of academic recovery time to us, they're three dollars. We have the next two years to do summer programming. So it's like, yeah, but then you can't really spend it till, you have to build plans now on these future learning gaps. So a lot of times, we might get eighty-three thousand dollars that we're allocated, but we're only authorized maybe. It's whatever we can go towards it. So if you can get everybody to go to summer school next summer, you have eighty-three thousand dollars to pay for. But our summer school participation rate's been very low. If we drain the lake, uh, I've been raped every day, maybe there'd be a chance. But that's kinda, so it is a little tricky, because you are getting certain revenues that you can't always spend. I think seventy, this is also going to my quick, uh, board report. This is our current COVID dashboard. And you can see in our early, you know, our, our E-three building, Scott, you've been here. Uh, it's been pretty hot today, I've seen, uh, this actually could probably go to you. Megan was streaming today, so I. This is live. Uh, so you can see, actually, it got better, but you can see it win. Uh, I did send a thing out to COVID incident clan team. Uh, we had thirteen staff gone on last Friday, but the problem is, you know, when it's all coming in, about two o'clock in the afternoon, I know. And then today, most of the staff are back, but there's such a small number, and I understand what Mr. Mo is sharing, but, you know, it's just like, we're, you can see now, uh, we've been able to hopefully limit our student population, Friday to second grade. And we share lunch, we share recess, we share music, we share everything by grade levels, just, this is the way we run, so. I understand, I, I got a third grader over there too, so I, it's tough decisions, but, um, I sent some to COVID incident clan team, I think you guys got it today. I just said right now, we're gonna hold, we're gonna watch it closely, but when is the one we're most concerned about? With that, uh, switching back over, there is a meeting tomorrow. Um, I can't tell you definitively what's gonna happen, because we do employ more than a hundred staff. There are some meetings, leisurely, but everything we've been given is, you can come up with a generic plan, but this thing's not gonna settle in court before next summer. They don't see the July first, I mean, the January first deadline happening. We'll come up with a definitive plan, but.
You gotta push it up before three?
Before the. But I, basically, they're saying this is gonna get, it's tied up in courts right now, it's been blocked by.
I think it's gonna prove spring court, and that it's not gonna happen real quick.
But anyways, tomorrow, I'm on another webinar, Minnesota Department of Health's come out. You know, basically, at the end of the day, we either have to have everybody vaccinated or have weekly testing. Testing supplies are available, we asked our, to order them. Um, we are positioned to maybe do it. And asking if you're not vaccinated. So we're, like I said, I have a webinar, Lakes Country tomorrow, Minnesota Department of Health, but I, I just can't tell you more, because I don't really know.
And that doesn't apply, that wouldn't apply to students, it's just.
Just that it's in place, so we'll shut. Lost nine kids since the last board meeting, you know, there, I don't really have any rhyme or reason, you know, why students left. But we'll look into that. Revenue's up, up to nineteen percent. Uh, I don't have any unexpected expenditures, expenditures are up from eleven to twenty-nine percent, so around pace where we're at every year. This is an annual MD report that basically has to show, I think the end of the day, if you look at this number here, I thought maybe this is the most important, is on average, uh, per ADM, so per student, fourteen thousand, six fifty-seven and three cents. That's basically what it costs, that's what we're getting funded per kid, we take all the revenues for our district, we're running the money, lobby money, all of it. Uh, district operations, obviously, we had Veterans Day this last week, uh, I think we had a pretty good showing. You know, it's kind of a sad day, because we only had one World War II vet, where typically we have eight to twelve, but obviously dealing with populations in their high nineties. And, you know, unfortunately, maybe some, you know, we're losing them at a rapid pace in our country. Ted Hill being recognized, date cross country, we had some kids playing in honor band, and then we had some eighth graders go down to Benson. District operations, the NEC switch already gained, it kinda told you, we had Johnson Controls and some January. Building and grounds director here starts a week, what, two weeks from today. Uh, we're fully staffed, uh, we had an app today for a elementary teacher that's got some interview, so that's the one position that's alter in title. We just been helping them out to help people, I think we're.
We still have one of them, you know?
But we have some applicants. Gym four got resealed over, Bill got resealed.
MEA.
Yeah, that's resealed, ready for winter sports. You saw the pad port out here. I don't have anything on Palmer. Uh, obviously, a lot of stress with buses, but it's gonna get better now, a little break with activities. I think you might actually be fully staffed now. Food nutrition, um, R1 Coke is still recovering from COVID, um, but they're looking for a long-term sub. Uh, district will, this committee, continue work there, so no issues there. Yeah, we're backward on devices, again, we got a grant, uh, we got an extra grant, but it's specific on technology. You can go order all you want, it's not gonna get it. But it is on order, and when it comes in, we'll get it, but we're not having insurance right now, this is for next year already. Uh, Megan's, did a lot of screening, you can see those, COVID testing, uh, we do have, like I said, we have a hundred ball tests, so we can send all the kids if we need to. And then you mail it in, they give you results. High school, uh. Nate, uh, Nate's old man, he had a little chiropractor issue. Uh, middle school, anything you want to touch on, Sarah? Smell, warm L-work, observations are going well. Uh, I know you have Margaret here.
Yeah, Margaret was here working with like this greater, um, on last Friday, we are launching an initiative to be part of the earth, and so talking about how we're to plant trees in the, um, spring, and really working to be there with us, so we have some work to do this year. And then also, um, it's really fun to see our veterans interacting with our kids.
Elementary, name's Scott.
I'm happy to speak to any of these, this, this is our month for the elementary to report up to the board on just kinda what's going on, and also our, our status with our strategic plan to this point in the year, so. Um, Chip talked a little bit earlier about summer programming, we were very fortunate to be able to find, uh, teachers who were willing to put in time over the summer to teach, and we had a, we had actually a very successful summer program at the elementary level. As Chip said, the, the difficulty is getting students, but we, we got a pretty decent group. Um, uh, we'll talk a little bit later about what's going on with staff development, but we've been working on our benchmark workshop, as we've talked about in the past, getting that curriculum solidly in place with fidelity. Um, we'll be looking at our ELOs coming up here on November fifth. Uh, we already talked about the, uh, openings that are still there, we have a PE long-term sub, so that'll be coming up here soon, pretty much through the rest of the year with two staff members. And then, uh, COVID nineteen, um, as Chip said, and I would just like to thank the, the COVID, um, command team for, uh, their guidance, and then as well as the board for your decision-making, um, we're, with that, that class in question, where we just hit our sixth positive, so we're looking at over twenty-five percent. Um, tough decision to make, and not a popular one whichever way you go, but I really thank the board, and I think it was the right one.
You're gonna cover this in a little bit?
Yeah, I can wait.
Yeah, Quinn? Anything you wanna touch on, Kelly?
Um, I just added on there, so you, I, I know we always say, you know, we have forty-four students coming from all these districts, so on the right-hand side, we just put, um, how many students we have from our partnering districts, and then, um, just a ton of kids actually on a waiting list right now, um, as we're trying to hire those practitioners, so you can fill more spots.
Phil?
Uh, nothing, nothing much to add there, I think we already talked about a lot of that. Um, winter activities is already underway, uh, girls' basketball started today, dance has been underway for a couple of weeks, basketball and, uh, boys' basketball wrestling start next week, so, uh, a little bit of downtime here for a couple of weeks, but it's gonna get real busy again very fast after we get back from the Thanksgiving break, so. But, uh, it's really in the winter time, so that'll be, will be exciting again, so. Uh, the community ed side, everything pretty straightforward there, the messenger's out. Uh, Angie and Kerry went to the state, uh, MCA conference, uh, taking my spot, I, I had the section cross-country meeting, a lot of other things going on, season events, so I couldn't make it down there, but they received a lot of good information regarding all kinds of programming ideas and suggestions, which is always good, uh, at the state convention. Uh, preschool and ECFE is going well, the pizza fundraiser starts this week, you can contact Sarah, or you can pay Angie twenty bucks, or whatever, whatever she wants. She's gonna win, she's gonna win the prize, she's gonna win the new truck, or whatever. Exactly. Um, early childhood screenings, we have about a hundred already thus far this year, only seventy-five last year, so a lot of that going on, which is good. Uh, the only, one issue we do have, and, and Angie's on our community ed advisory council, uh, was at the meeting last week, we've had some issue with, with, uh, because we have so many kids in our after-school program, not our before-school, but after-school, and Audrey Frye's in charge of it, she's fantastic, she's absolutely awesome. Uh, but trying to keep that fully staffed, when you have sometimes only two or three employees, when you have sixty kids there, it makes it really, really difficult. So, uh, we've kinda put out a, a full court press and trying to, to get some new employees and, and, uh, looking primarily at, at, uh, a lot of upperclassmen, uh, seniors at high school to help out, and we, I think we've made some headway in that regard, so we hope that, uh, we're gonna be able to, to get more people involved, so, uh, again, that's a fantastic program that a lot of people rely on. We have to make sure that's, uh, that's, that's taken care of and, and, uh, and, uh, staffed appropriately. Uh, we do have some angel dollars being used to help out some families in need, uh, for assistance and fee payment. We're also looking in, getting involved in, in C-CAP, there's a lot of paperwork involved in that, being looked at for future assistance for those that, that might need it for families, so, uh, lots of good things going on in, in community as well. Uh, Connor Peters sent this to me on the, uh, Laker Foundation, uh, update. Uh, obviously, their endowment fan, uh, fund campaign continues, uh, to go on, uh, with a goal of three million by, uh, one, one twenty-four, so a couple of years, I think, uh, they've made some pretty good headway, they've received some donations even in, in the last week or so. Uh, several involved naming rights of rooms, and, and though that was all discussed when she was here, uh, earlier, uh, in the school year, I think it was a couple of months ago, so, uh, that will go forward. I, I know the art area down here in the home ec area is gonna be named and honored. I, I know the art area down here in the home ec area is gonna be named in honor of Sue Foster and, and Ivy Cooley, that's something that, uh, uh, you know, will all come to. Through the board when we get it, uh, that's already been donated, um, so that's kind of a, a real positive and, and something that's pretty exciting for the foundation. Our website's being updated, uh, endowment fund accounts are, uh, we set up with local banks here in town. Um, we've also gone through a, a local brokerage firm, Thrive It here, uh, Dean Ankeny runs in town here, and the majority of endowment funds were transferred there. Which are a shade less than, there's actually more than that now, I think it's a shade less than three hundred thousand dollars, so. Uh, developing, the, uh, Fund Development Committee meets on a regular basis, uh, funding events, uh, the Laker Classic and the Taste on the Lake were as successful as they've ever been, which was great. Uh, this past year, lots of involvement and it raised a lot of funds. Last couple of things, um, I talked a little bit about the recent donations already, uh, the charitable gambling, uh, we went in with high hopes for the charitable gambling. Uh, with Laker Foundation, but, uh, we're gonna, we're actually gonna get out of that, at least for now, we have a license that's good for the next year, but right now it's just not going. Uh, in the direction that's gonna make us any money, and obviously that's, that's something we wanna get into so early on in this endowment campaign, so. That'll be discontinued at the end of the month, uh, and the Fund Use Committee, which I'm a part, will, uh, Van Chris is as well, will eventually, uh, start discussing. Uh, with the Foundation Board on how to process the next steps when we get to a point where we can start, uh, uh, taking requests for certain things around the school districts, so. That was Connor.
Uh, updates on events, uh, we got obviously a board meeting tonight, we got a teacher in service, uh, Wednesday, uh, Thanksgiving week. We have a work session on the eighth, we have, I think that's night of our social. Hello?
Yes, yes it is. It's on our account.
Sorry.
Thank you, it's night of our socials, A is regular board meeting on the twentieth. And then, uh, January, February, we have our reorganization meeting, uh, M S B A just says that, as you'd be that. First, first week in January for reorg, so we'll have that coming over after the first of the year. At quarter two, teacher in service and reorg board meetings coming up, so, do that in there. Some to your questions, that completes the super topic. Very good.
Consider approval resolution one-one-one-five-two-one-two-one-one, accepting donations.
So. You can see our donations, Steve's Soil and Water for two twenty-five, Conservation Day donation, boss. Power Bus Service, five hundred dollars for the Veterans Day donation, Dave buying cake and food for half off some costs. And then you had a wave of seven dollars for the school, and it's donated six thousand dollars.
I'm gonna do a motion to accept those donations.
T Ray, T Ray gonna make the motion. Ted. I will second. Uh, Bar Smith, yes, Savajo.
Yes.
T Raykman.
Yes.
Ugesberg.
Yes.
A Raykman.
Yes.
Legred.
Yes.
And carries. Revenue and expenditures. Mr. Chair, this is what I talked about on our revenue and expenditures, so you can see over, this is the overview of last year, the revenue and expenditures, where you started and where you ended, so. Basically, you're, you're ended in a surplus. So you just need more actually to accept it, it's not, you're gonna have a full, uh, pot to come up here. I don't think you actually accept this, right, it's not actual action. Preservation, sorry, thanks.
Yep.
What carrying during COVID? Uh, Mr. Bennet, do you wanna thank you, wanna mention about this?
You know what, it just, uh, the M T A wrote a grant for, enhancement grant for our whole, whole union, part of it is, um, an eight thousand dollar, um. Grant that we received from Ed Minnesota, on our end, we, last year we did carry COVID, where we paid, uh, went out and bought, had local businesses all. Sorry, but, um, uh, purchased gift cards right before Christmas, so we could get a big push into our local businesses all over. Just tried to spend about five hundred dollars in every business that was basically kinda functional and open, uh, that we could, at the same time, that was limited only to our teachers, so last year. To see if you guys wanted to incorporate in, to get our paras, our cooks, our bus drivers, our, our, uh, mental health practitioners, you know, I mean. You know, everybody taken care of, and then the M T A took upon themselves to do all the purchasing of that and then get that out, so I was just wondering if you wanna do that.
Our tradition I was bringing four thousand dollars to us through our grants, is that what we're gonna check? You know, it's only five, four or five.
I think last year, I think last year you did five, but I think we only spent about thirty-five hundred real, on, on, we might've had, we had a little bit of flush fund. That I don't know if it ever even got spent, but we spent about thirty-five hundred on gift cards.
Is there a lot more people to stay there?
Uh, we have more, more teachers, I guess, I don't know, I, that's something that you and I have to, or we have to figure out is what our total increase, I know we're up, we're up over.
We have two hundred and forty-eight staff.
And we were two hundred and twenty-one last year, so total, so.
I'll make a motion to approve to five thousand dollars.
I think that's what we did last year, I don't forget, but we have a little bit extra that we need.
I'll start here. Motion in a second for up to five thousand dollars, Bar Smith, yes, Savajo.
Yes.
T Raykman.
Yes.
Ugesberg.
Yes.
A Raykman.
Yes.
Legred.
Yes.
And carries. Consider approval of the substitute teaching memorandum and understanding. Uh, Mr. Chair, I just want to thank Mr. Bennet, M T A, uh, we talked about this in principle with our M T A, and basically, you know, uh, in a normal year. You know, if I wanna sub for Mr. Bennet, or he, you know, I, I would get paid a ten to fifteen hour. And honestly, we are subbing like crazy and teachers are distraught because when I give up my prep time, then I am prepping, I'm working even more at home outside of contract. This is just more, uh, using COVID dollars to increase the amount of subbing internally. So a seven to twelve grade teacher would get fifty dollars per class, and, uh, an E three to six, we'd get twenty, thirty, thirty bucks, and that. That's cause our class grades are half, uh, and then, so just, just be all paid out of COVID dollars. The other two is like, we're really, we're really stressing out our counselors, our social workers, our mental health people, because they're doing. A line share of sub too, so they continue to see an increase also, so. And this sun sets at the end of the year, uh, I just want an opportunity to, to, uh, to increase it for this year. I think it's great.
Thank you.
Uh, I'll make a motion to approve. In a second.
I'll second.
To Zach, Bar Smith, yes, Savajo.
Yes.
T Raykman.
Yes.
Ugesberg.
Yes.
A Raykman.
Yes.
Legred.
Yes.
And carries. Consider approval of following seniority list. Yeah, it's earlier, so we're already, uh, sent to the union, we've accepted the students, we're gonna have to board. Can I get a motion for that? Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, thank you. Bar Smith, yes, Savajo.
Yes.
T Raykman.
Yes.
Ugesberg.
Yes.
A Raykman.
Yes.
Legred.
Yes.
And carries. Consider approval of initiation of standing agreement, like we meant to help. Part of our agreement with, and with our contracts is that we provide employee assistance, so this is an opportunity for staff, for no cost themselves. Um, we're authorized, I think, up to two or three, um, mental health sessions, uh, for short-term counseling. So it's just part of what we agree, and it's part of agreeing that we return contracts for employees. So it just reestablishes that. I'll entertain a motion. Subpo. Uh, can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Bar Smith, yes, Savajo.
Yes.
T Raykman.
Yes.
Ugesberg. A Raykman.
Yes.
Legred.
Yes.
And carries. Bleachers. Three years ago, this brought my attention, uh, through Bill, that our bleacher system in the high school gym is getting to be. You know, uh, of major concern, sometimes you get it out, and then sometimes it's hard to get it back in. You're sending consorias underneath, it'll get jammed, to get, to put arms in between things, and it's become, basically you can see here, uh, unsafe. Can we continue to use it? Yes, you can, sign up to ADA compliance and sign up to other codes, uh, this last year was some of your COVID money, you were able to. I don't wanna say shift expenditures, but, you know, things that we would already be paying for, uh, you have extra dollars, so at this point. Uh, based on the revenues that you were able to have last year and the extra million bucks that's sitting out there this year. So just like this M O U you just agreed to, that's gonna come out COVID dollars, the extra staff that you hired is gonna come out of COVID dollars. You know, and then the conversation, right before I left for Africa, we were going to put it out, kinda like our baseball field. Hey, naming rights, you can have a gym, well, we didn't agree with the Laker Foundation, so really that money would go into endowment, so. What we're gonna do is, uh, this is up for discussion, but I wanna circle back to, we get a ten percent reduction if we do it in March. Cost of it's gone up over twenty percent over the last two years. And supplies, and we have to let them know this week if they're gonna do it in March, cause it might take them four or five months to get all the supplies, and even then, it might take until June till they're all, they're all here. Um, what, what we would do is get this installed in March, it would be available for graduation, it would start the day after our winter sports seasons are over. And then we would have new bleachers, and not just our main gym, your main gym, the auxiliary gym, the pool area, and elementary school, the gym. Uh, you see total cost as well, is it three-three-two, Bill?
I believe so.
Anything you wanna add, Bill?
Uh, no, they would be replaced with the, with the plastic back bleachers that you've seen in almost every other school around here, and it, and you're one of the few that have not yet to replace our bleachers. Regardless of school size, I mean, the, the smaller schools have done it, the big schools, we just have not, done it to this point. Uh, it, they're really are a mess, especially the ones in the big gym, they're twisted up, they're really difficult to get out, I mean, it's just, it. It, it's probably time, I mean, you, you, we can let this go, uh, several more years, but then the, the cost is gonna be just, I mean, it's many times more than it is now, I think. They're forty thousand dollars more than they were two years ago, and we talked about this for the first time, it's just gonna continue to go up and up. Um, the only difference would be in the, uh, the permanent bleachers that we have in the, in the pool area, they hold about two hundred and fifty people, they would be, uh, all aluminum bleachers, and the reason being, obviously, for the. High humidity and, and the rust factor in there, and they'd be much, they'd be, they'd be tip-up bleachers, they still hold two hundred and fifty, they'd be, they wouldn't be quite as high. But enough that they could see over everything to see in the pool during swimming contests, and they'd be tip-up bleachers, they're like, for those of you who've been to Starbuck and been to those, uh, junior high games, they're. Just like that, but bigger, obviously, and, and they could hold more people, so a lot easier for custodians to, to work around and move around if they have to in the pool area, so that would be the only. Only difference, uh, in that regard, and I think that's a lot better situation for what we have in there with the high humidity. Other than that, they'd be all replaced with the, with the up-to-date bleachers and all, all ADA accessible and all those kinds of things, railings on everything, which is all code now.
Do we have the right T M S blue available, so Jeff doesn't get mad at you?
We, yeah, yeah, for that kinda money, I think, uh, that won't be a, won't be an issue.
You mentioned we could use them for quite a few more years, Bill, I mean, what? In my last discussion with Cory before he left, you know, over time, he said they were a pain to work with, but if you had two guys. It was workable, a little bit of concern, if we have about a million dollars, we're gonna, you know, consider doing a third of it on bleachers. I mean, we have some big ticket items, you know, with, uh, Boiler and Starbuck and stuff that everybody's kinda. You know, known about for some time, those type of questions, that when they do go, Boiler, that has to be done. I have concern. You know, doing something like this.
With the endowment fund, I mean, is there any kickback at some point that to, to reimburse or anything like that for the expenditures that are put up front to try and replenish some of the funds that are spent on this? There's potential, but I didn't wanna bring that up, Tim, cause I, I can't guarantee. Right, well, right, you don't know when, when it could happen, or. Right. Whether or not if.
You know, so early on in the endowment process, that'd be pretty hard.
Anything with that sizable amount of donation, it's kinda set up over a ten-year.
Mm-hmm.
Donation so many years.
Right.
It's not a lump sum, typically.
Right, so like this last year, I think we allocated a hundred and eighty thousand dollars to remodeling the front of the school for the school drop-off, which we didn't do, but. You know, it sounds like we need to revisit the drop-off, like, I mean, we were just gonna reallocate that hundred, one hundred and eighty thousand towards this. And then use somewhere long-term, so this is gonna come out in L T F M, it's not gonna come out in general fund, so.
I think it is good to note that those bleachers are not very safe for people who need a railing. We have wheelchair access, it was ridiculous, there's nowhere to go, there's nowhere to stand, um, it's, it's, um, I mean. It's almost embarrassing, to be honest, so, I mean, Benson has better railings, and, you know, it's, it's.
Well, my only concern is, this brought to me a few years ago, before I was, and we got all of our, uh, estimates then, and then it was like, well. You know, we could continue to wait, which is fine, it just, uh, when I met the board chair and our building, it was just like, this was something I wanna be brought back, I. We just need to know how you feel about it, my recommendation is, you take it out of L T F M, get it done in March. I think, I mean. And in, and in the worst-case scenario, I mean, the worst-case scenario, if it, it comes down to you, you can reallocate things in L T F M, you have, uh, almost four, five, five twenty-five in L T F M. You can take some of your monies out and you, you have a fund balance that's gotten bigger because of it, so you have some.
That's kinda where I was going.
You're in a place right now where you have some.
You're not always in those positions, so when you are, that's when you do stuff like this. That's, I mean, I, that's what I think, also, we go to the community for a lot of things, it's nice to see what we do ourselves most well.
And that gym, that gym is the focal point of our whole operation, if you're a lot of times when there isn't outside of Benz.
Well, I think we, we do the bleachers, and then I think, if you wanna, you know, I go down a bowl, and, you know, you go to a lot of gyms, now they have these like. Like, we just had the Veterans Day program, and you're kinda watching TV, swallowing that behind everyone's, there's elementary kids, and you. That's where the community may come in and have a, a scoreboard that's digital, you know, those are things you don't have to have, but.
That's not an easy shit.
No, we, we, we looked at this a couple of years ago, we saw the, you know, we were down at convention, looked at the plans, talked to the guys. Nothing's gonna be cheaper here, we haven't, we don't need to be done, we're in a position to be able to do it.
All right, well, I'll entertain a motion, does anybody else have any questions or comments?
I'll make a motion to approve.
You, your motion in a second, Bar Smith, yes, Savajo, yes, T Raykman, no. Uh, Ugesberg?
Yes.
Uh, A Raykman? Legred?
Yes.
And carries. Uh, upgrade the bleachers. So this is a whole different, this is a whole different subject, but there's been a lot of concerns, especially after coming off the football soccer season, is we have nowhere that has any of our bleachers on the football field. So this is to get installation of ten aluminum mid aisle handrails as you go up, up here on the football bleachers, so it's gonna be twelve thousand eight fifty. This would come straight out of Jonathan, cause this isn't a replacement. So we're just looking at a motion to get this going and be installed before next spring. People used to be more agile, it was nineteen. T Raykman will make a motion for the football ones.
I'll second.
Uh, we have a motion of support by Raykman and Savajo, Bar Smith, yes, Savajo.
Yes.
T Raykman.
Yes.
Ugesberg.
Yes.
A Raykman.
Yes.
Legred.
Yes.
And carries. Approval of the district's world's best workforce, Scott?
So, board members, you should have two copies in your, um, addendums in the back, the one that's up there on the screen is the more reader-friendly version. Um, the world's best workforce, uh, uh, we shared this last year, but it's, uh, required of every district in the state. To create a world's best workforce plan with goals under five different areas, and then, um, to provide a, a public. Update on the status of that to the board and to the public, uh, minimum of once a year. So we do have this one published on our website, uh, for people to read, um, thank you to Angie who got, uh, worked with the designers to get it. Looking so aesthetically pleasing.
This is where you use Katie Almberger's team to apprentice, so they're very professional.
So, um, there is also the version that I turn into the state, or the chip will turn into the state, it's the, uh, it's the actual summary report that we have to give every year. Um, if you remember, uh, last year, the, the state suggested that we do a, a reboot or rewrite of our world's best workforce goals. We, we had the equivalent of it already in our strategic plan, but they want it all in their format, so we did do that, um, and then their suggestion was to take that and then implement in this year. So, that being the case, there isn't a ton that I can provide, uh, a conclusive, uh, I guess, summary of, because we haven't finished a year of implementation, so I'll. I'll touch on some high points of things that we, um, decided that we're gonna do and where we're at in some of the areas that I can. So the, the five-goal areas that we have to report on, the first one is that all students are ready for school, that focuses on our preschool programming. And they did set a goal last year that, um, students attending our Little Lakers program, that we would have seventy-five percent of our students show full proficiency in all of the areas of vocabulary and oral language. Phonological awareness and alphabet knowledge, and, and that that would be by the end of this year, so that one is in progress right now. I would like to say thank you to the board, um, some of the action step pieces that we're doing with that, we're. I would like to say thank you to the board, um, some of the action step pieces that we're doing with that were approved last year in the springtime. If you remember, we, we really tried to make our early childhood programming more robust, and the support for our staff in that more robust as well. They just had their first staff development day as a, um, in a long time as a early childhood staff, and the feedback I got, you know, I, it isn't always that you have people come up to you and say, you know, thank you for the staff development day, but they were so pleased to have it, and so thank you very much for that. Um, the second goal, if you wanna scroll down, deals with all students being ready, um, in third grade, um, and achieving grade-level literacy. So, basically, reading by third grade. So, um, we talked at the beginning of the year that we had determined that our reading scores was the area that we wanted to improve on at the K through three level. So, typically, we've been in the ballpark of sixty percent proficiency on the MCA. Our goal, uh, by the end of twenty twenty-two, um, on the MCA at the end of the year is to be to sixty-five percent, and then to keep growing from there. Um, again, we did not have public data put out by MDE, so we, we don't have much to compare to, and we only have unofficial results, which put us in the ballpark of where we've been in the past. So, we, again, I can't report on that until we come to next year. The next goal was um, closing achievement gaps, and again, um, the, you know, where our goal is that we will identify all of our achievement gaps and close them. Um, there are a couple pieces to point out that are well underway. Um, we, those of you who were in the curriculum meeting earlier today who heard us talking about the systematic curriculum review schedule, and that is a big part of that achievement gap closure plan. Um, and then the implementation of benchmark readers workshop, which is again happening at the elementary K through six level. And so, those are in progress and underway. Then the next goal was, and by the way, I'm doing a very quick overview, so if you have questions on any of these, you stop me, or I'll speak to them at the end if you have them. Um, is all students are career and college ready by graduation? The high schools set the goal of having seventy-five percent of their seniors at the end of this school year, being either, either earning three or more college credits, a CNA certification, or being enrolled in the MAHS apprenticeship cooperative program, uh, which I feel like is a pretty rigorous goal. Um, career counseling has now taken place, um, as a status report on that. Career counseling has been completed with the seniors, and they're now moving on to juniors, um, which was part of the action steps that they have listed for that right now. And then the final, or I guess, oh, the, the last one is, uh, graduation rate. Um, and it's, you know, basically, uh, right now, I think our graduation rate last year, even with all the COVID pickups and things like that, was ninety-six percent. Their goal is to get it to eight, ninety-eight percent. Um, and so, it's, uh, again, a pretty rigorous goal, but, uh, you know, even with COVID, I felt like we did a pretty good job. So, again, all of these, we will provide are, um, a summary that is conclusive at the end of, um, at the end of this year, I should say, in the fall of next year, because that would be when we would have completed a year focusing on these goals. Any questions on any of those?
So, this is an action, I don't think we have a motion. Just to, to accept the ISD two thousand and four nine district world's best workforce. I'll make a motion. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Zach, Bar Smith, yes. Savajo?
Yes.
T. Reikman?
Yes.
Boesberg?
Yes.
A. Reikman?
Yes.
Legred?
Yes.
Carries. Presentation of mental health services, Amanda.
All right, so just to give an update, Chip asked me to come and talk about, just kind of because this is a new position and how things are going this year, obviously, um, a lot busier, I think, than I thought, but obviously, it's a much-needed thing.
Yep, just tell me, click.
Yep, click. Um, so for K-12, as of right now, the end of first quarter, I have twenty-nine total students. There's three more have paperwork, so full of thirty-two kids already. Uh, referrals are being made by staff and parents. On Wednesdays, I'm at the elementary, I just got another one there today, so I have eight there, and then the other twenty-four between the grades of four, twelve. And I'm here Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Fridays, you see those kids.
So, the, so the way this works, sort of, for programs to understand is, like, um, the way we pay for counselors, and the way we pay for, like, a school resource officer, is we get save schools money. Our school district, I think, gets paid like sixty-five thousand dollars for save schools money. Minnesota typically rags across the country, but the highest student to counselor ratio, meaning that the average counselor in Minnesota sees more kids than anybody else in the United States. It's 'cause we don't get a lot of money in save schools money, okay? We do love every dollar we can, so sixty-five grand is about what you get. It goes up a little, down, up and down a little based on your school's student enrollment. So, normally, we have them to help people, and in this building, you have two. And usually, they, uh, they one-hundred percent come and service special education students, because Leah, Omar, cause she has, um, a belt in, our third-party builder, every time they see somebody, it generates service minutes, and those service minutes go into their IEP, and it goes into MDE off their Mars number, and that's how you generate data. And that's how you're paying for all your mental health staff, how, how they win. Problem is, regular ed kids don't generate anything currently, so what we did, a change in law happened last spring, and what we did is, we, we brought Amanda in off COVID dollars, because there's a big pressure on, we knew it was always an issue, but the problem is carrying it, right? So, because of, uh, these little names, these little letters behind her name, she qualifies for third-party billing, so this year, you're paying Amanda through COVID dollars. And the goal is, uh, this next year, is we'll actually transfer it over to billing, because we can actually bill for her services. And so, our, our goal is to use COVID dollars to start these programs, and then get them off COVID dollars to do revenues that we normally don't get. So, I just wanna set that, 'cause currently, no regular ed student can see a mental health provider, um, in our school district, like legally, it's not even, it's not even, do they do it? Sure, but, like, you could if you were in a crisis, right?
Well, and there is, um, stuff on the books right now to change that moving forward, but.
So, that's why you normally don't see mental health people in public schools, because they're typically, and the only ones to see them are ones that are through federal law. So, that's why this is.
As far as presentations, um, I sent out a message to teachers, I went into Mrs. White's kindergarten class, Mrs. Green's third-grade class, and we talked about social skills, identifying emotions, and little body on the left is one of the pictures that one of the kids colored, we did. Yellow was happy, red was angry, uh, black was nervous, and blue was sad. And I kept every picture that the kids colored, it was quite amazing to see. Um, and there were certain ones that drew red flags, and those are ones that teachers connected with the kids, so it's kind of a win-win situation. You saw a kid that was struggling, and you got to kinda call it all right there, so that was good. Um, I developed a PowerPoint presentation, uh, just on various mental health topics, didn't use for staff in service days if needed. I did a community presentation last Thursday, Mona Gregerson from the Global Women's Leadership Council at Pro and Church called me up, and they needed a presentation on teen dating violence, so I went over there and did that. Um, not a lot of questions about teen dating violence, there were more questions was about disposition in the district, and I emailed Chip about it. They just think it's great that now these kids that normally didn't qualify for services now get it right at school, and so they're really supportive of that. Um, and then coming up on the twenty-fourth, staff had the option to do an in-person, um, presentation on suicide prevention and mental health if they choose to. Otherwise, they can do the PD for me stuff, but I have two of those are part of my PowerPoints I've already done, so that's already to go. Um, some school community meeting groups that I'm with, um, myself, Mary Walsh, the school counselors, um, I think Molly, who does the COVID stuff, um, and Britt, and Kema, or not Britt, uh, Abby and Kema. We're all part of the mental health student support services, we have meetings every other Tuesday, kinda talk about caseloads or mutual kids that we see. Uh, involved in child protection meetings, I-ten tat meetings, which are teacher assistant team meetings, just had one today, uh, with special ed teachers or regular ed teachers, if they're in the referral process or have questions, kids that maybe are gonna get referred to me, um, so I'm involved in those K-three, four, eighth, and nine, twelve. Um, I'm part of the safe and welcome committee meeting team, and also part of the crisis team. Thanks. Um, just to give you a little update on my schedule, so like I said, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, I support four through twelve students. Wednesdays, I s- I'm at the elementary supporting those eight kiddos there. Um, typically, on an average day, I see anyone from five to eight kids. Um, sometimes, today, I started out with three kids, I ended with six, so it just kinda depends, hence the keep time open for drop-ins. Um, and a lot of those kids are kids on my caseload, or kids that are struggling, and they just need to see someone. Um, each one of the thirty-two kids that I'll be seeing, each need a diagnostic assessment plus a treatment plan, which gets a little hard to get done, but I plug away on them as quickly as I can. Um, and then I'm also completing, uh, progress notes for each time I see a kid for a session, even though they're non-billable, but this will allow, if you guys ever have any questions on what could this position would have, you know, the revenue would have generated, or anything like that, or the total number of minutes that I was seeing kids, or anything like that, I have that all for you, so I'm keeping a pile of all of those as well. Um, the policy handbook, we talked about this earlier at the policy meeting, um, it's similar to the wins handbook, but I had to go in and kinda take out, um, a few things that normally pertain to, um, just the general ed setting. Um, and then the verbiage I had to change, so it reflected more of the mental health services versus the win, um, verbiage there. It's something that didn't necessarily need to get done right now, but with the help of Leah, it's good to get stuff going now, because when we turn it into a billable thing, it's all ready to go. So, when this position started out, and I had some time before my caseload, it made sense to get going on, um, all this stuff, so that's taken care of, so. Uh, future planning, so after January first, around there, Leah and Andrea, who does the third-party billing, are gonna get together and talk about, so we have everything set up and ready to go. So, when the billing period can start, we don't have to have another meeting or another meeting, we have it all ready to go, um, and that's taken care of. But some things to work out there as far as with this being a different position and how we look at billing for those services. I know I was asked by some people, do you think you'll lose kids? And I don't, known, I don't, I don't think so, because if they're gonna have a service, it's gonna be outside of school, and they're gonna have to go pay for a service provided outside of school as well. So, I really don't hesitate that that's gonna be an issue, um, and it's been really good so far with thirty-two kids, so. Um, and we talked about in the student support services meeting, we have one again tomorrow, just about how do we begin mental health awareness prior to mental health awareness month is May, like, let's make this an issue. Um, and it is an issue for all kids right now, so let's start earlier in the school year. Um, so I contacted my good friend Alicia, and just an idea of, like, can we do a logo, like a tee-shirt, a sweatshirt, or something like that? So, I just wanted to showcase what she had come up with there, we can do it on, we haven't really decided what we're gonna put it on yet, but it's just something to get awareness out there and going for staff and students, so.
Questions?
That's it.
I think the fact that we're staying on sort of thirty kids for, uh, especially as we mentioned the holidays, which are not always, coming out the highs and lows and the lows. And then we enter the whole winter druidness of Minnesota. Uh, the concern on me is just, uh, it is, obviously, it's Amanda, no, and then the problem in a district our size is, you can only support so many programs, right? So, yes, you'd love to have five Amandas, and every kid in all those services, but ultimately, there's what we can buy, and which unfortunately, as a council department, is more triage. I mean, you know, whether you can share your years of being a school council, mainly triage, and you're trying to connect them with resources, right?
Yep, connecting.
Because you just don't have, you know, three times already being sliced, and every day, you can slice them into thirty-one, thirty-two.
Questions?
I know there was some too, like, I, there's some kids that I've already gone to every other week, or once every few weeks, and it's mainly just, like, in acute crisis type of thing that they were in, but enough where they needed the support. So, it's not meant to be like a year-long thing for all kids, some kids need it, some kids don't. Um, some kids were struggling with school starting anxiety and how to cope with it, so I helped them with that, and now they've been able to kind of maintain a little bit, so. The goal is to try to not funnel them out, because obviously, if they need the help, they need it, but it's there for a reason, so some are more shorter-term than long-term, so.
Yeah, so there's one good thing that comes out of COVID is, when opportunities start to program them.
Zach's all right.
Yeah.
It's gross hair out of the blue. Thanks.
So, do the kids, um, know about this, or, I mean, if they're actually, some of those.
As the same?
Yep, that one, yep.
So, they all know about it, and the big thing is that in order to get these services, like parents have to be, like, parents have to be on board. I mean, I just don't like to be surprised sort of things, and so I can share that.
All right, Lynn.
Lynn.
Here we are. We're kind of scattered all over the place, but, um, our team, um, representing our paras in our building, Cassie Hall, Lisa's not able to be here tonight. And we've got Ron. Ron, London Breck, one of our mental health practitioners. Lisa Manager, teacher extraordinaire. We have Nicole Meisner. Our education, what is your first?
Educational coordinator.
Coordinator. Kelly Quaid, program director, and I'm Leah Ogen. So, that's our team. All right, click. You wanna read that one?
Oh, sure. Um, and just so, I mean, we have some new board members that maybe don't know who we are, but we're, um, pretty much a special education federal setting for, meaning that all of the students within our building um, have special ed needs and IEPs, and it's embedded with a CTSS, so the Children's Therapeutic Support and Services, Mental Health Services. So, MDE and DHS trying to work together, it's great. It's just, it's great. Um, we are a K-12 program, serving Minnewaska and the surrounding districts. Our services aid students in regulating their emotions and behavior, so they can return to their home district and be successful. So, teaching those skills that they need, that brought them to us, that they just didn't, um, hadn't honed in on yet. So, students receive core academic and then up to three hours a day of mental health services. So, an hour of individual skills, an hour of group skills, and then they get therapy while they're there during the week, too.
So, and we're just gonna kind of buzz through our strategic goals, and you guys have all had access to this stuff. Um, but I mean, the first goal of rigorous, relevant, and personalized learning, I think, Ron, were you gonna touch on that a little bit?
I was gonna touch on that.
Oh, Lisa, sorry.
Um, basically, this year, we had a survey, kinda go out to staff, um, to discuss what they think they need, or what sorts of things we could improve on as a program. And one of the big points that came off from the survey is just curriculum, especially, um, academic curriculum within the building. Um, and that we could probably benefit from having some new curriculum, but in that, too, we need to make sure we get the appropriate materials for our building, because our students are kind of in and out of mental ser- health services throughout the day, so they're not always in the classroom. Also, we can have kind of a wide range of ability level in any given classroom, anywhere, you can have a kid who's two to three grade levels below where they're supposed to be, and on the same end, two to three grade levels above their grade level, all in one room, um, working together, um, going in and out, and then the behavioral issues kind of on top of that. So, looking at, we, and we did some exploration last year during our PLCs, but looking for something that would kind of meet those, that, that range of grade levels, and also meet sort of students hopping in and out, so something maybe not where you wouldn't be providing instruction, but where they could kind of work at their sa- at their own pace at the same time. It's kind of what would probably benefit us, but we're still exploring options and looking into that for the future.
So, the way it's structured, if you walked over, uh, there's probably four kids in second grade, but they can be all over. You have some kids that could almost be kindergarten, first-grade level, and you have some kids that could be third, fourth graders. And you have four, typically, they have paras, and then you can deal with the mental health component, so having, uh, and sometimes, over, we, we have most of our parents, so not everybody's a special ed teacher. Some are elementary teachers, but some are not necessarily in the field, so. When we do curriculum days, we do bring them in to work with our team, so you have a whole team to get secondary curriculum, so you're not, they're trying to figure it out on your own. But it is more challenging.
Thank you. Um, and again, efficient and effective operations, um, our team, when we meet, we're kind of reviewing these things, our resources. Um, I, I think this has been one of the big benefits of kind of Chip forcing us to have all these goals. Thank you. Um, but it really does kind of make us a little more comfortable in how we're doing things and how we are gathering our data. Um, other districts want to know exactly how we are proving progress on these kids, and what, what we use, uh, to show that. So, really working hard to kind of blend all those worlds with their, um, mental health goals, their academic goals, as well as just the overall behaviors that kind of blended them with us in the first place. Is there something else on this one, too?
Um, I think one thing that's kind of important to note, too, is we kind of changed things up a little bit this year. Um, we've been really focusing on the individual needs of each student, so, um, let's say a student is maybe struggling in the classroom, but doing really well in individual skills, skills with Ron. Um, Ron may join Lisa's classroom with that student, and kind of determining which kids need which interventions. And we're kind of looking at kids as more of a multi-tiered system of support, so figuring out what they need, how are we gonna support that, and what interventions they need. That's something we're. And what interventions they need. That's something we're working on. We're moving toward this school year, which I think is a huge part of our success with our kids at the moment.
And so another key component, the fact that efficient, probably the most thing the board needs here tonight is, uh, we have a third-party builder that does an exceptional job. And so that third-party builder isn't just processing paperwork, but it's being sure that when IEPs are written, uh, they're written specifically. And then those minutes are captured because every time, um, mental health providers sees a student or anytime all these services provided, we're billing for them. So I would say where you were maybe supplementing Wynn for a couple of years because we didn't have a dedicated third-party builder. Less than for me is that third-party builder, not that you guys aren't very important. That person is maybe, uh, it's Andrea Gullison right now, but she makes sure that that is very, uh, it's making money right now. It's making money even when Wynn's actually generating revenue for the district. Uh, you can imagine some of these schools, they're trying to get them up and running. Uh, there is a school up and out. If we send a kid there, it's going to cost you sixty-two thousand dollars a year because you're paying for the building, you're paying for heating, cooling, staffing, uh, everything. And the reason why it's so expensive is there's only eleven kids that attend it. So, I mean, heck, I probably couldn't rent a garage out or eleven kids and keep that under, you know, five thousand dollars a piece, just rent alone for each. So it's really important, uh, right now that, that efficiency has really helped out a lot. So it's been really critical.
With COVID, with everything that everybody's been through, the stress has been palpable. And I think everybody knows that. Just wanting to kind of focus on that, I can speak to last week in our building. It was, man, thirteen staff out in one day, leave the dent. So one of the things we wanted to focus on this year was, um, oh, I'm on the wrong one for that one. So I'm going to come back to that, sorry. The culture of our team is very important. Um, doing staff surveys, getting a bead on how people are feeling. Are you overworked? Are you stressed? What do you need from us? How do you need to be able to, to do your job? So.
Which and I did link into your board report, um, the survey that we sent, or we had all of our staff go out, um, just going over different areas, um, on that. Just on how they're feeling about how things are going. It was pretty on the top. It was awesome. And some of their feedback, we got some things that we really need to do. And with the partnership and communication too, we've really, um, done a, kind of a good job on working in our community. Um, so we're not looked at as, you know, the, whatever.
That building.
That building, that building. I can name a million names. Um, we actually have, one of our Wynn students is working at Tom's right now, which is pretty cool.
I would say, uh, Wynn's been a lot of dialogue. And I figured the, the shift that's happened in Nassau is you're seeing many more wins, not necessarily wins, but mental health component. But Wynn used to be the catch-all. There used to be called day trees. You had kids that were severe, unique kids. Uh, you used to see a lot more violence, right? Bites, some more violent. You had instances where kids were running, you know, running out of doors, running away. I feel like lately, those instances.
Here's where Ron's going to play.
Yes, yes, they were more violent. Um, there's still a lot of behavior. We're still a catch-all for a lot of kids and other districts don't know if we were. I mean, that's true. And we face mental battles sometimes trying to get the kids back to the home district.
They don't want.
They don't want.
Cause you could imagine if you're Chicago Burr and there's thirteen kids in a grade and you have one kid who is just bouncing off the walls. You can totally disrupt a school. And we're a cheap option because if you were trying to provide a one-on-one teacher, a one-on-one parent, a one-on-one space, one-on-one everything, coming over here.
Well, and the next least restrictive environment after us is the residential program. So that means they're living there. And that's leaps and bounds more expensive.
But I think changing the perception of what happens over at Starbuck is pretty amazing because some of you have been to graduations over there. It's, it's remarkable for how some kids will come in and when they exit the program and go back to school. And some kids just transitioning over here. We just had a kid that's going to do that now. We have a student who's transitioning over here full-time.
And they're always a hundred percent successful, right, Sarah?
They continue to grow.
It's challenged sometimes, but.
Number four, definitely. I think this is on your program four, right?
Yeah. Feeling safe when you go to school is such an important thing. And that's one of the things that we really want to, to focus on with how we program. What kind of services they have set up. Um, a hundred percent of the kids in our program have had horrible, horrible, horrible experiences in school for years probably. And so we want our building and our program to feel like a very safe, um, and nurturing place. Cause we're all a bunch of nurturers over there and that's what we do. Um, but also being very purposeful in how we do that. It's not that we're just calling them to tell them everything's going to be okay. They learned some tough lessons over there, but, um, really focusing on letting them have some successes. And we celebrate the crap out of those successes.
Um, yeah, just staffing obviously continues to be a struggle for us. Para support, support in the classroom, we kind of throw around like different ideas. Do we need behavior specialists? We keep getting more paras, but it's pretty stressful. I think like we would say, we don't have any one-to-one para needs in a particular classroom that has four kids. We have one para and she's spending all day in a reflection room because if this one's not thrown off or this one can't be in there, you know what I mean? And sometimes all of them are out and it's just, it's a constant battle and we just battle, um, burnout so bad. Working with staff to make sure they're not burnt out. Cause it is high behavior. So it takes a lot of resources. That's our biggest challenge, I guess, is making sure we're fully staffed.
And we do get to the point where like last week, we, we're certainly talking amongst ourselves, are we safe to even be here right now with that? Staff to student ratio and the behaviors that we have, those are certainly questions that we ask. We're not facing a battle that any other school or any other program or business or anything is not facing right now. So we do the best we can with what we've got, but it does affect the quality of the stuff that the kids are getting.
So one of the things we are, we're going to circle back on this is like, okay, this is where we, we look at seven, twelve being distance learning, you know, for a certain period of time. So we can steal pairs from seven, twelve to help cover the K-six. Cause I think we could all argue that K-six being face-to-face is absolutely critical. We want everybody face-to-face, but if we run into a complete staffing issue and you have thirteen staff gone, and you have kids with extreme, you know, I don't want to say extreme behaviors, but somehow extremely behaviors. And you, and if they're all off, you, it becomes a point where there's just no way to cover this kid that's, you know. You can't cover lockdown because you don't know people. So, uh, I think that's something I took off, you know, I, I heard this morning. Cause really if you look at COVID dashboard, it's hard to capture that. It's really not COVID per se. They may not be COVID positive. So we only track staff that are positive. I, I don't know, I said, I don't have a way of knowing how many kids, or I'm sorry, how many staff are out on a particular day at Wynn's. So Kelly and I just discussed, hey, if we get above that twenty percent threshold, just if we get above a sudden staff. We, we gotta let COVID disinfectment because maybe we'll have to go to, and you know, some distance learning. And maybe it's not for sure, you know, a long period of time, but until we have our staffing ratio where we feel comfortable.
But I'm positive, um, so far this year we have had four complete program graduations. We currently have ten students on transition plans, meaning they spend part of the day in either their home district or, um, in one of the buildings in our district. And then the rest of the day with us with the hopes of just keeping on increasing that. One works to study student, um, over at Tom's. And I really can't say enough about the staff that we have there in just kind of talking to our staff in preparation for this. Just hearing, I asked the question, why do you keep coming? And no one's, no one's getting rich doing this. People have a genuine love for those, those kids and the work we do. So I'm just super proud to be part of it with them.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks, guys. I'm intrigued. All right. So I shared this part, um, earlier in the evening. And so we'll go on to the action plan update. So strategic direction, one relating to rigorous, relevant, personalized learning, some of the things that we have going on at our building this year. Um, we've put a lot of emphasis on professional learning communities or PLCs. Um, that's, you know, basically professional collabora- collaboration between, uh, grade levels. People in the special education department, um, intervention, all of these people. And then, um, using that for curriculum and intervention planning. So they've been meeting twice per month doing that. Again, going back to what we talked about earlier with the curriculum team, uh, on October twenty-fifth, our staff development focused on backward planning with benchmark curriculum. The new curriculum that we have, benchmark is very, um, in-depth. There's a lot of components. There's more than the, the company admits this, benchmark has more, uh, bells and whistles than you can possibly use. So then it's how do you determine what is the most bang for your buck when you're teaching your kids with this curriculum? And so that was what that date was all about, was, um, starting with the end in mind and then backwards planning to determine what's the most important elements of that curriculum. And then preschool, actually, again, I mentioned this earlier, had their first staff development on the twenty-fifth as well. They learned about second step, social emotional learning curriculum. And again, the feedback I got from staff was huge. They were very appreciative of that. And then coming up November, November twenty-fourth, staff development teams are going to be, um, taking the work that we did previously and using that to refine and create pacing guides for our essential learning outcomes. So those are a few things under that first one. And also I have, um, I can introduce Jamie Katzenmeyer, who is, uh, representative from the BLT, who's our special ed representative. And, um, what, are you on, special ed has to scaffold students to be able to work with the things that we do in benchmark. And so I asked if she'd be willing to share a little bit about Orton Gillingham and some of the cool stuff that they've been doing this year with that.
So Scott, we had the privilege, Alicia Christman and myself, um, did Orton Gillingham. It was five days during the summer. We did it on our own. Scott paid for it with staff development, but full days. It was intense. It was overwhelming. But it was amazing training. And I would love to share this with Sarah later too. But Orton Gillingham, it's a methodology for teaching reading and writing for kids with dyslexia. But it's not just for dyslexia. A lot of classrooms do it, but it's more, it uses the sight, it uses the sound, the touching. There's a lot of, it's a multi-sensory program and it's amazing. And my kids right now are just eating it up. They love it. And if I don't finish my sentence, they finish it for me. So they know exactly the routines. If I'm ever gone, my parents can step in because they've watched me enough. Or the students can be the teacher and they can do it. And their, their spelling is ridiculous now. Like it, my third graders to watch, I give them this word and the first time I would show it, like a three-word word, they didn't know what to do. And now they can spell it and they can sound it out by the skills that we've taught.
And that was something, you know, the, being able to provide supports for students with dyslexia was something that kind of went out of vogue for a time and now has circled back. And MDE has started saying, we, we want schools to have resources in place to help with that. And so we feel really good about what, what the special ed team is doing with Orton Gillingham because I do feel like it provides a resource honestly that districts around us may not have for those kids that struggle with that. Um, our strategic direction two, um, relating to efficient and effective operations. First of all, with regard to efficient and effective operations, I just want to point out that I got everything on one slide that you guys had and all those differences. I'm just going to point that out. So one of the things that we noticed was that we had a, um, we had a problem where some of our stuff was getting, um, that we would create curriculum-wise would get, you know, somebody would move. Move to a new, um, school and then that document would disappear. So we, we've created a, a shared PLC drive and then right now our teams are in the process of working to revise our shared curriculum and standards documents into a common format. Cause a lot of times we had the, the work done, but it was, you know, one grade level did it this way, another grade level did it that way. Under direction three partnerships and communications, um, we're just, we're trying to tell our story a little bit more. We think that there's a lot of great things that happen in our schools that the public doesn't always get to hear about. So we're, we're trying to by twenty twenty-two have some social media presence with just, you know, with the elementary school on Facebook and Twitter with our own sites for those. Little Lakers preschool is up and running with theirs. And then the fourth strategic direction, um, safe and welcome, uh, welcoming learning community. Um, a lot of this has worked on, uh, well, one, we, we brought back our Laker pride committee in, in full force. It was something that had been in place in the past. Um, and we, it had kind of fallen to the wayside. So we pulled that back together. And the teachers there have done a fantastic job, um, bringing back the star qualities. So every month we have a character education quality that's brought to the forefront. The teachers are teaching in the classroom and then we've just added some fun things like the principal's chair. We draw a name, um, from the kids that get a cop being good ticket every week and then they get to come down and take my chair for the day. If they're second grader, they get to take it to second grade and sit in the principal's chair for the day. And, uh, you know, just, we also have Laker pride binders we, that we actually created or that that team created. And so now every staff member, including all of our new staff, get a binder that has all of our behavior guidelines, our disciplinary guidelines and everything laid out so that they have all that information. And then the rest of our safe and welcoming pertains to our crisis planning, you know, we've done, uh, we committed to doing crisis training during the workshop week. Um, and we've had three crisis drills to date, preparedness and that way. Any questions for us? I think the, the, what we want to share tonight is traditionally we bring every building or department in every month, you know, sometimes two a month. And because we didn't have a work session this month, we, it's a little longer meeting tonight. But what we really want to tie back is, you know, we had our kind of our COVID disruption year last year. And I think I kind of heard, you know, like Nick, uh, you had mentioned a curriculum, you know, uh, we discussed and Angie curriculum. And then not just policy, but getting back to what we were doing. Uh, Kelly's still going on. We don't shut everything down, but getting re-engaged and getting after our strategic roadmap, getting our curriculum work back together. Staff development is being very intentional about what we're doing. And, you know, a lot of your leaders, uh, you know, a lot of your leadership teams in your departments are, are continuing this work. So that's why tonight's a little longer. But to report back on what was developed, the district, uh, data retrieved back in August. What has been brought to teams, we've been working on this fall, another workshop day next Wednesday. Thanksgiving Wednesday, we have staff development day and continue this work. And this is on top of what a lot of our staff are doing. So I just want to make sure, uh, for some people, we really haven't come back this, I just want to make sure. We're back into doing this work. Next month, you have a chance here at the middle school. After this, after the first of the year, you get a chance here at the high school. You get other departments that'll come back and, and read those with you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Send calendar. Uh, new hires, if you want to see, these are new hires. So we have Reggie Brooks coming in to be a night custodian. Uh, and we have Jeff, uh, who's our new lead during the day. He's actually in the district office now, beginning right now. Olivia's going to come in to be our new payroll and benefits manager. So we'll start here in the, Angie Twine, how you?
Thirty.
Thirty, yeah. Uh, Denise Coburnick, uh, coming in, uh, this is just, uh, mental health.
Mental health practitioner, yeah.
Zach coming in to night custodian, uh, Ethan coming to be our bills and grounds director, and then Morgan coming in as a health practitioner. Those are the new hires. Change of status, you got Jackie Hugley. She's just changing, uh, times, uh, no change in otherwise. Uh, huge retirement that we're accepting tonight, uh, from the board. Vinnie has been talking about this for quite a while. This is her year. Uh, if everything works out, she would like to retire at the end of this, end of this school year. Uh, she's not here tonight. What's that?
That's a different letter.
Different letter. And I know she was just, it was too emotional at the end of the night. So it doesn't, we would deal with it. She's, she's just been very emotional. I did meet with the personnel committee on last Friday. We did discuss a, a job posting, which will be posted tomorrow. She knows about it. It's not, hey, we just think we're going to need all the work we can over the next three weeks to get someone posted. And then hopefully, uh, I'll look at interviews that second week of December. So we have one there and we see resignations. Uh, we have a mental health and, uh, lead custodian. So that's a consent agenda night. I'm going to make a motion. Angie in, second.
T. Raykman.
T. Raykman, Barstens, yes, Savajo.
Yes.
T. Raykman?
Yes.
Ugesberg?
Yes.
A. Raykman?
Yes.
Legred?
Yes.
Motion carries. Other announcements. We have the handle of policies, uh, get her in twenty-one.
Twenty-one, my man.
I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, policies.
I'll second this.
Very nice, guys, thank you. Barstens, yes, Savajo.
Yes.
T. Raykman?
Yes.
A. Raykman?
Yes.
Raygman?
Yes.
Motion carries. Now, you know. Yeah, the only other, Angie's been working really close with, uh, Pemberton, uh, with their election lawyer. Uh, there's a lot of things we have to do this next year in preparation for next fall's election. Um, voting places, so she's gonna work on that piece. What else, Ange? That piece, we, next month, we will be taking a vote on the, on the levy. You know, initial run, I just think you continue to do what you've done, max levy. Even if you try to reduce in one area, you're, it's really tricky. I, the tax impact is not gonna be, uh, you could try to reduce on sixty thousand dollars, but I don't know if you can save any of your taxes at all.
I think another thing, MSBA is set for, I wanna say like the twelfth, thirteenth, fourteenth of January. So, um, I have booked everybody a room already. So by the next maybe meeting on the twentieth, if you guys could decide if you're actually gonna be able to go, because I have a certain period of time that I have to cancel the rooms. So right now I have everybody lined up to go, so.
So everybody's going unless you tell Angie you can't.
Yep. So.
Very good. Well then, uh, Mr. Chair, I think, knock on wood, if we interview this, uh, Title One teacher, we hire mental health. For a moment in time, we might be full of staff before Thanksgiving. Wow, that's not realistic, by the first of December maybe. We're in a really good position that way. Yeah, not normally that good. Here's your announcements, Mr. Chair. Truth and taxation's gonna be at six-thirty, we've never had one to show since I've been here, but I do have a nice PowerPoint there while I'm ready for it, so.
Can we use it alone?
Oh, yeah.
Nobody shows up?
We still have to do it, yeah. Get early, so you get a good seat. And then I think, I think when we get into the summer board meeting, I think work for the board members is maybe a conversation with the board chair, if you wanna, you know, what you're thinking about as we re-are going to the hall. Yes, do you have any, wanna change your focus in life on the board, let me know. You're like an alcoholic, or what? The only, uh, the only thing I would recommend. I just said you're gonna get it anyway. Any luck? But maybe keep personnel for the teacher negotiations, because I don't think it'll be done before the first year, maybe. Sorry. Maybe. Oh. Well, maybe, we don't have a meeting day yet, but. All right, that wraps it up, I'll make a motion at, uh, eight-thirty to adjourn, I'll entertain that.
I'll submit.
Thank you, Nick, you have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Zach, Barstens, yes. Savajo.
Yes.
T. Raykman?
Yes.
Ugesberg?
Yes.
A. Raykman?
Yes.
Motion carries.